Just give everyone a minute to commit. As a reminder, please mute yourself. Good afternoon. This is a hearing for the Boston Cannabis Board. Today is Wednesday, February 17th, 2021. Today's hearing is being conducted pursuant to certain temporary amendments to the open meeting law. That is what allows us to meet virtually. This hearing is being recorded and will be posted to the City of Boston's website. While all members of the public are welcome to attend and encouraged to attend, there will be no additional testimony accepted today. Before we begin, I will introduce Chairwoman Kathleen Joyce.
Good afternoon. Thank you for joining us today. My name is Kathleen Joyce. I'm Chair of the Boston Cannabis Board, and today I'm joined by Commissioner Lisa Holmes, Commissioner Darlene Lombos, Commissioner John Smith, and Commissioner Alejandra Senkian. And I want to thank my commissioners again, and I appreciate your time and all the work you put into this the last couple of months, and especially the last two months. The questions you asked during the last hearing were very helpful, and I think they help others that are looking to come before us as a board, but they also help with all of our deliberations. So I want to say thank you for all your hard work.
With that, we will begin with the first agenda item. KG Collective LLC, the proposed license premise is 1589 Columbus Avenue, Roxbury. This is an application for a retail recreational cannabis dispensary license with proposed hours of operation from 11:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. This is a certified equity applicant. The initial application was filed September 17th, 2020. The initial application with Inspection Services was filed September 17th, 2020. The community meetings were held on November 17th, 2020, and December 28th, 2020. Chairwoman Joyce, do you want to begin with your comments, please?
Sure. Leslie, just to remind myself, so we're all going to go around and give initial comments on the application and then go back for a motion. Is that right?
Correct.
Okay. One second. Pardon me for a second. All right, for KG Collective, their diversity and inclusion plan not only included an annual report, but also a quarterly self-assessment, which we have not really seen before in many of these applications. I appreciate that. I think it showed a nice commitment by the applicant to check themselves as well as to check their compliance with what they've told the board on an annual basis. Their employment plan was strong and very specific, and they have a proven track record as business owners in the community. There, I think several of the commissioners pointed out that they are giving preferences to applicants that are fluent in Spanish and competent in American Sign Language, and that they are also prioritizing hiring single mothers, which is something we haven't seen before either. I'm looking forward to these updates from this applicant should they be granted a license by this board. They have a strong plan for protecting youth and anyone under 21, and the applicant is continuing to address the parking concerns in this area and has proactively reached out to BTD to continue these efforts. So they got high scores for me in most of the categories.
Thank you. Commissioner Holmes?
I agree with the chairperson with the exception of I'd just like to see a more detailed security plan and for them to actually work with a security specialist because I was just the only thing they were lacking. I was a little bit of the building and product security as well as what their complete security plan was, but they assured when I asked the question that they would, you know, update that and they would be getting that to us. So I'm sure that with time, you know, they will beef that up. So other than that, I just think they're a strong community group. They've, like I said, they've demonstrated themselves in Hill with their shop, and so I just think they were really strong candidates.
Thank you. Commissioner Lombos?
Yep, I agree with my fellow commissioners. Very strong application, really excited about following up and hearing how you're hitting your target goals. They're gonna, it's exciting to have single mothers prioritized and want to get the support you need in hitting those goals. I really liked the feel, look, ask, give back thing. I just thought it was really well presented, so I really liked how easy that was for me to understand how you were going to do that. So, or the applicant was going to do that. So again, strong application. Thanks again. Agree with the fellow commissioners.
Thank you. Commissioner Smith?
Good afternoon. Yes, I agree. Strong application, more than just the intention of hiring single mothers, it's taking care of the children part of it. And just would want to make sure that that commitment stays and would ask about, you know, the off-street parking, utilizing the easement of urban edge, and really continuing this discussion with your butters around parking and so forth. But very strong application. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Commissioner Senkian?
Thank you. Not much to add, just echo my fellow commissioners that it was a really great application. Definitely the two owners very pillars in the community already and looks like a great opportunity for many. So, thank you.
Thank you. Chairwoman Joyce, do you have a motion?
Yes. I make a motion to grant this applicant a license for this location.
Are there any questions regarding the motion? Seeing none, is there a second?
Second.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None opposed. The board votes to grant the license. The second applicant is Mayflower Medicinals, Inc. The proposed license premise is 230 Harvard Avenue, Alston. This is an application for a co-located medical and recreational cannabis dispensary license. This location is currently operational for medical. Hours of operation Monday through Saturday, 9:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m., Sunday, 11:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. This is a non-equity applicant. The date of initial application was October 22nd, 2018. The date of filing with Inspection Services was August 19th, 2020. The date of the community meeting was April 2nd, 2019. Chairwoman Joyce?
Thanks, Leslie. This is another strong application. This applicant has been operating, as you said, since 2018 at this location, and I want to expand to retail. I liked how they said they were going to encourage their customers to explore Harvard Ave and the other retailers and their commercial strip while they're waiting to prevent queues. They've gone to great lengths to to determine how long it would take for someone to, from entering the door to making their purchase. I think that that shows a real sense of respect for the community. They don't want people outside. They don't want, and the community doesn't want people outside. They don't want additional traffic issues. And I just urge the applicant to continue to work with that community, work with the community, especially regarding the traffic and crowd concerns they had. I appreciate that they wrote in their board memo that they have already put measures in place to have additional traffic attendance for the very beginning of the opening should they be granted a license.
That's all I have. Thank you. Commissioner Holmes?
Second, I agree. They've already been working and they've shown real care for that community in the neighborhood, and so I greatly feel that they can continue it on on the retail side. I do note that they do have another virtual meeting scheduled for March 8th, but other than that, I think that, I think that they've lived up to their, what they've stated, their business mission, and they've really kept the neighborhoods' concerns to the forefront.
Thank you. And just for the record, just to point out, the additional community meetings, because some of these applicants have been in the process for so long, the CCC mandates an additional meeting within a certain amount of time before filing the application with them.
Thank you.
Commissioner Lombos?
Yes, I agree with my fellow commissioners. I think this was a strong application. I very much appreciated the employment plan, the investment in a fellowship program, whistleblower policies, all those things that can note worker voice on the job, which is very nice to see. Also liked the response. I pointed out in the public, in the meeting last week that Last Prisoner Project was a great organization. Their response to looking at local organizations, I thought was, their openness to that was good and pretty good DNI goals. Want to make sure that, I like the transit subsidies. So again, strong application, good high scores on my end.
Thank you. Commissioner Smith?
Thank you. Strong application, echoing Commissioner Lombos, the clone program, the fellowships, the work that they're doing, you know, what access and the blue bike. Thank you so much. It's very strong application. So, I support.
Thank you. Commissioner Senkian?
Just echoing my commissioners' thoughts as well, and thank you for the clarification on not, not, what, how do I say this? There was concern about the applicant not having, having agreed to not have a recreational once it was available, and I, and I feel like, and I thank you for the supplement information that that in fact was not the case, because that's important, that the trust of the community is there, and also the clarification on the clone program. So, but overall, I thought very strong application.
You. Chairwoman Joyce, do you have a motion?
Yes, I make a motion to grant this applicant a license at this location.
Are there any questions regarding the motion? Seeing none, is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And there are none opposed. The board grants, the board votes to grant a license. Verdant Reparative, Inc., the proposed license premise is 150 State Street Downtown. This is an application for a recreational cannabis dispensary license and product manufacturing license. The hours of operation are 10:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m. This is an equity applicant. The date of initial application was November 10th, 2020. The date of filing with Inspection Services was December 13th, 2020, and the date of the community meeting was January 21st, 2020. There is a buffer zone conflict with this location, and the applicant has submitted the required buffer zone statement. Chairwoman Joyce?
Thanks, Leslie. This applicant scored very high in every category for me. It's a very unique location in that it's a multi-story building in downtown Boston, and also adding to that, that it's an equity applicant. It provides a whole other lens with which to look through this application with. This is a unique proposal, also in that it's co-located recreational dispensary and manufacturing. This isn't something we've seen in the downtown area. I just wanted to comment on the buffer zone issue. Should we be making a motion to grant this license, it would be subject to a heightened scrutiny. It's called for in our rules and regulations. The applicant, and I think we've talked about this before in previous hearings, that this is prime real estate in Boston, and we wanted to make sure that everyone, equity and non-equity applicants, had an opportunity to succeed and open up a business in these neighborhoods. There were some conditions, I think, that the applicant had agreed to, and I think one of them was to not sell singles. Is that this application?
That too, yep.
Okay. So I would, should we grant this license? I would like that to become a condition of the license.
Thank you. Commissioner Holmes?
Yes, I agree with the chairwoman because we actually made that distinction with the other marijuana dispensary downtown that they couldn't sell singles. So I agree that we should do the same here. But I also like the fact that this applicant has agreed to, you know, pay for an additional park ranger on the Rose, you know, the Greenway and some other stuffs with the, that the downtown community that they're going to be serving. So, and as the chairwoman said, this is an extraordinary business plan that they have here with the kitchen and all the stuff. And when you think of all the different jobs that are going to be available in just this dispensary, not only dispensary workers, but just think of janitorial services and bakers and all types of different employment opportunities that this business is going to make available. So I just think it's, it's just an amazingly outstanding business, and I'm just looking forward to see how it all comes together. I don't, can't believe, I'm excited about it.
Thank you. Commissioner Lombos?
I agree with my fellow commissioners. Very strong application, and I actually, I just think it's fun. I think this is one of those applications where I was like, this is going to be so fun. I'm excited. So really strong on all scores, community support, DNI, employment plans, so all of that, really check the boxes. I'm always going to say worker voice just for Mr. Jackson. He knows me, but very strong scores across the board. Thanks.
Thank you. Commissioner Smith?
Thank you. There's a wealth building piece of this that, you know, being able to give people the opportunity through Mainvest to invest in it. I actually checked out their site and see what they did. I thought that was really interesting. Understanding the location and knowing where it is, thinking that, you know, folks have been shut out. Many people have locating businesses in certain places. So actually, it's really exciting to be there and that you're thinking about contracting and all the work that is going to be done in and around that business and about building wealth. It's important. So yes, I think it's a wonderful application. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Senkian?
Thank you so much. There are a number of things that I loved about this application in addition to what the commissioner's already stated, but the space, the opportunity for jobs for, and again, this applicant came before us and we approved a previous space, and part of that was really the commitment to hiring those with Quries, reparations for those coming out of incarceration. The operations fund, I feel, are very unique and really raise the bar on how we can actually increase equity in this field. I also am really interested in the crowdfunding on the debt side. I think that's a really interesting model that I'd love to follow and learn more about, as I think it is an opportunity for those who don't have personal wealth to be able, or aren't part of a larger industry complex to be able to really take part. So I appreciate that part of the application and bringing that to our attention. So, but, oh, and I, this was two, one of two applications that mentioned an art space for local artists, and I love, love, love that. I'm sorry, I don't remember. It might have been Mayflower, the other one. I don't remember. But I think that that also just really, really stood out for me and something that's going to be needed, particularly as we crawl our way back from this pandemic. So, thank you.
Thank you. Chairwoman Joyce, do you have a motion?
I do. I make a motion to grant this applicant a license at this location.
And is that, are there any conditions to that motion?
Yes, with the condition of no singles to be sold.
And the buffer zone condition on zoning relief for the buffer zone is inherent?
Yes, condition upon the buffer zone. Yeah, sorry about that.
Are there any questions regarding the motion? Do I have a second?
Second.
Commissioner Holmes, all in favor?
Aye. Aye.
And there are none of, the license is granted conditionally, pending zoning relief for the buffer zone, and with the condition on the license of the sale of no singles. Thank you. East Boston Local Roots LLC, the proposed license premise is 1006 Bennington Street, East Boston. This is an application for a recreational cannabis dispensary license with proposed hours of operation of 9:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. This is a non-equity applicant. The initial application was filed January 31st, 2019. The initial filing with Inspection Services was February 27th, 2019. The community meeting was held June 25th, 2019. Chairwoman Joyce?
Thank you, Leslie. This application scored high for me in every single category. Their diversity inclusion plan had, was thorough. And we did have some questions at the hearing, and I appreciate the applicant supplementing the materials. And again, I just want to restate that we are a new board, so we're learning this process as we go to. So if we ask these questions, it's to help clarify things that might get raised during the hearing or before the hearing, but I appreciate the applicant working really hard with us, submitting the supplemental materials, providing clarity on the ownership and investment structure. And there was minimal impacts to the neighborhood and the community. I think the applicant made that very clear during the hearing. And I don't have any other comments.
Thank you. Commissioner Holmes?
Um, I like the fact that they're all homegrown local people who have pooled their resources to try to start a business, which to me means that they're going to really be conscientious about what happens in the community and in their neighborhoods and ensure that, you know, the business runs well. I'm going to take, steal something from my fellow Commissioner Lombos, and I like the fact that they're going to have working hours for mothers and, you know, various things to help people in the neighborhood work and gain employment and that they're, that they're very conscientious that everybody can't work nine to five and that mothers or single parents have to work weird hours and that they're willing to give people those opportunities to work. And so, strong application. I'm glad that they clarified how they all put their pool, their resources together. And to me, that really shows that they're going to really make a concerted effort to make sure that this business succeeds.
Thank you. Commissioner Lombos?
Yeah, I just don't have very much to add. It was a great application. Echo my fellow commissioners. Love to, love that they're all rooted in the community. There's not much to add, so I'll just echo what everybody else says. Thanks.
Thank you. Commissioner Smith?
Yes, rooted in the community and invested in the community. And I think, you know, there was some back and forth about parking, but it seems minimal impacts on that community that they're invested in. So, thank you for the application.
Thank you. Commissioner Senkian?
Yes, I agree with my fellow commissioners. I too was struck by the fact that it was, it was all locally owned. I thought that that was a great asset. And I appreciate the follow-up on the financial input. I I don't have an issue with it. I don't think, and the questioning was not that there was any, that I, well, at least that I didn't have any feeling that it was nefarious at all. I was just really thinking about how these are structured. I also appreciate them updating the commitment to hiring people with Quries and putting a number to that. I thought that was really great. I do want to take one moment to to explain something to everyone, both those applicants, future applicants and stakeholders, because it's come up a couple times, and this, and this was one of them. And I think that's a question of what equity is and what it isn't, and the role of this board. Policies and procedures are put in place so that the communities and individuals disproportionately impacted by the racist policies, procedures, and practices of the war on drugs have the opportunity to now benefit from a change in those policies. Decriminalizing marijuana is not a policy step towards equity. It's towards equality. And what this board does via the ordinance, in the spirit and the policy, policy it's placed in the ordinance is to provide equitable access to communities of color interested in taking part in this industry via the following. This is what we provide. The city equity fund and technical assistance to applicants of color, a one-on-one ratio, diversity of locations within a profitable market region, and the onus on all applicants regardless of race to show that there's a diversity and inclusion and employment benefit plans that is based in race equity. I understand that for some people not used to these types of procedures, it may seem unfair and overly burdensome, and I just want to say that it is neither. It is a small, but small act of reparation for decades of systemic racism and mass incarceration that has disproportionately impacted Black and Latino communities and families. What equity does not mean for this board, and I want this to be very clear, it does not mean that we hold any applicant to a different standard when it comes to the following, their diversity plan, their safety and security, their financial integrity and strength, and their appropriateness of their location. It's been inferred twice, both through this applicant and through another one we're going to hear soon, that this might not be the case, that we judge equity applicants differently. That what it was referenced for another application, that an equity applicant was using their trump card as being an equity applicant to bypass community dissent, and that a non-equity applicant was being overly scrutinized in a way equity applicants were not. I just want to make it clear that we do not do that, that we hold them, everyone to the same standard. And if people, all of our records are subject to FOIA. And so, I want to clarify that point for all future presenters, stakeholders, and elected officials who may be unclear about that. So, want to get that in there. Thank you very much. A very strong application.
Thank you, Commissioner. Chairwoman, do you have a motion?
Yes, thank you. I I make a motion to grant this applicant a license at this location.
Are there any questions regarding the motion? Seeing none, is there a second?
Second.
Commissioner Lombos has seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
And there are none opposed. The board votes to grant a license to this applicant at this location. Moving to old and new business, there were two items from the prior hearing that were deferred to allow for review, for the review of supplemental materials submitted. The first, Amber Gardens, Boston LLC, the proposed license premise is 297 Newberry Street, Back Bay. This is an application for a retail recreational cannabis dispensary license with proposed hours of operation of 11:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. This is an equity applicant. The date of initial application was August 17th, 2020. The date of filing with Inspection Services was August 20th, 2020. The date of the community meeting was August 26th, 2020, and October 13th, 2020. Chairwoman Joyce?
Thanks, Leslie. One second. Pulling up my notes here. This application, I liked their positive impact plan that they worked throughout their board memo, especially starting with the diversity and inclusion plan. I was impressed that they are planning to hire, or their goal is to hire 100% Boston residents. And also, they did increase their hourly rate to $19 from what was previously submitted to the board. When I look at the category of community feedback, which we are tasked with scoring up to 20 points, I look at not the, not just the quantity of the feedback, but also the quality of the feedback and what that impact would be on the overall application. Again, like I said, this could be a possible score 20 points. Our scoring guide explains that a 10 in the two subcategories of letters of support from public officials and letters of support from community groups shall indicate the highest level of support. There was support from the mayor's office. During her testimony, the ONS liaison went into significant detail regarding the existing support, the existing opposition, and the extensive work done by the applicant and the community. The liaison noted the initial, that initially the mayor's office was not in support. Was not in a position to support the proposal. However, the applicant voluntarily deferred its initial application before the board to conduct additional outreach to the general community and to a butters. To me, this is significant. They could have been before us, I think, in December, but they opted because I think they saw the writing on the wall that there was not a lot of support, that they could have benefited for more time, which then put them a little bit behind other applicants in the queue, but they were willing to do that to work closer with the community. This additional diligence in the community and the revisions to the proposal resulted in the mayor's office support at the hearing, all of which the liaison detailed. There is significant opposition as well, and the opposition comes from elected officials, the district city councilor, and also the state representative, representative who was also a resident. That being said, we did have written support from the state senator who represents this area. I share this just to show you that there is support, there is opposition in both our quality support, quality letters of support and quality letters of opposition. So for me, this applicant received a five in the category of support from the elected officials. The second subcategory was community organizations, and they did not have the support of the community organizations. Our scoring guide allows us to give additional consideration to things like letters and testimony from community members, of which there was at least 250 signatures from Back Bay residents. Letters and testimony from a butters, there was both support and opposition in this category. We're allowed to look at proposed establishment, the proposed establishment having a feedback loop, which we don't get into very much, but this feedback loop provides feedback from the community members and other stakeholders, such as the formation of an advisory council, or the scheduling of quarterly meetings with ownership and management. While the applicant didn't speak to a formal advisory council, it was evident to me that they worked really hard and really closely with the community and have actually put in place something very similar to what is called out in our guidelines as far as a feedback loop. They moved their business model to a strictly appointment service model in an effort to reduce crowds and disruptions to the neighborhood. And to me, this goes right to the quality of life issues I'm always concerned with. The additional time they took between when they were eligible to be on our agenda and when they were actually scheduled resulted in even stronger application, a much stronger application. And to my And in my opinion, the modifications they put in place and the changes to their business model, I think will result in the least amount of disruption to the neighborhood. These things like purchase minimums, online ordering, no single-use joints in 7 to 8 p.m. for residents only. Should they be granted a license, become conditions on the license. They were also, we also deferred them an additional month. And they provide additional feedback to us and supplemental materials in that additional month. I wanna address a number of the establishments we've already approved in this neighborhood. I gave the additional consideration. I, I have raised some questions at the hearing to be sure that Mr. Hoffman was aware exactly of what kind of business arrangement he was getting into, and his team supplied supplemental information that stated that Mr. Hoffman has reviewed this arrangement with an attorney. So putting aside the equity certification, which I do not question at this time, the fact that we have an equity applicant before us in a highly desirable, desirable Back Bay neighborhood is significant. And we have mentioned this in our other hearings as well. We've mentioned this earlier. We do not want non-equity, highly-funded applicants to have the ability to lock down these neighborhoods. It is worth noting that should this applicant be granted a license by this board, they will be required to provide a full update on its operations and practices as part of the annual renewal process. And I do wanna acknowledge Councillor Box's second letter about the residential complexity of Newberry Street and the fact that this may not be the strongest equity application with the best location. We can only consider the application that's before us today. We can't look over our shoulders at what is in the queue, what might possibly be coming up at a future hearing. The board is tasked with evaluating the appropriateness of time, place and manner of each proposal on its individual merits. I really do appreciate, as I wanna mention, I was very concerned about the deliveries and I still am. The applicant went out on their own and submitted a traffic report, which clearly demonstrated that the, these experts believe that they could do these deliveries in that back alley with a certain size car with the least disruption to the neighborhood. So tho- those are my comments on it. They put a lot of work into it. I think they've demonstrated that they are committed to working with the community to have the least impact on the community. And I really urge them, should they be granted a license, to, to continue that, that open conversation and to work with them. Crowds, disruptions to the neighbors. This is unique in the sense that it is a neighborhood, but there is, there is retail and commerce in this block. So you have to remind yourselves that your neighbors, it's their home and you wanna be very cognizant of that as you roll out your operations. Back to you, Leslie.
Thank you, Commissioner Holmes.
Well, I don't know if I can say much more. Chairwoman Joyce said it all. I, I had a lot of, um, I had a lot of reservations about this location, the location mainly and the amount of opposition that the residents of Newberry Street, as well as a few other things with this application. But, um, they, they have made significant gains with all, with the, the exception of the, um, the criti- the criticism by the neighborhood, which we're gonna get that no matter who's putting a dispensary where some people just don't want these things in their backyard. And I completely understand that. They were, I had, did have a lot of concerns about the ownership and some of the stuff that was originally in the application, but they have come back and they really have tried to alleviate a lot of the concerns that we have. I think their best additive now for me was the, um, the, um, online only. And that's going to, I think, help defer a lot of the criticism from, from the neighborhood. So, I, I, although I don't think it's a perfect application, I think they've met the criteria that is set forth for us to vote on. I mean, we could wait for months and months to try to get it perfect, but is that ever gonna happen? Are we ever gonna make everybody in the area happy about this location? No. So as the chairwoman said, taking, taking into account all the additional information they provided for us and the ability that they seem to have to continually work on making this the best location they can. I, I, I'm okay.
Thank you, Commissioner Lumbos.
Thank you so much. So I, I struggled with this one too. I think all of us did. I think that I wanted to point out that there, there are scoring categories. Again, everyone should look at our scorecards just to take a look at what the categories are. I wanted to point out, it had a pretty good employment plan. I liked the profit sharing. I like the high wages. It's pretty good. And I actually think the DNI plan is, is pretty good too. I like the scholarships and the internships. So there were some really good things in the application, although there's, as both my fellow commissioners have already pointed out, some opposition, um, lower scores on that. There's just no, if, you know, there's no way around that. We score that section based on what we hear and what we read and, and, and from the community and from elected officials. So it got a lower score on that for me too. But I did wanna just point out that there are other categories and there were some really good things that I wanted, I, I wanted to highlight and I liked them. So, again, I struggled with it, but I also think that we have to take the entirety of the scoring into consideration. So, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Smith.
Thank you. Yeah, it's very much the same like the other commissioners. And I think that, you know, given the community opposition and the, you know, the letters and so forth, you know, struggling as well, but also thinking that, you know, in the end for me was, this is also about opportunity and access, right? Like very much what Commissioner, Commissioner Alejandro said. You know, some of the criticism felt as if, you know, very sort of nimbyish and class-based and who has the opportunity to be where. And also, um, there was a sense of, you know, part of our work is to be able to provide access for people to get into this business and, you know, and we have to think about accessing different, different neighborhoods. Every dispensary can't be in Roxbury and Dorchester, you know, like every liquor store, you know, something like that. So we have to really think about how this will look around the city and really being, to provide access for folks. So while I also struggled like the rest of the commissioners with this, I think, you know, there were some answers around, you know, the leadership and the person in charge and some of the funding and all that. I think the rest of the application, except for the community support, was strong. So, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner St. Jean.
Thank you. Um, I, I agree. And I, and I wanna just thank the, the chairwoman for just a very thorough, thorough overview of all the different areas. I think that was really important in, in this application, given that there were multiple concerns that needed to be answered at different times. And so I think it just goes to show there are gonna be some that, you know, are kind of an easy, not easy, but they're, they're a definite go-ahead because there's, you know, because of the location, because of the support, because of the finance, you know, all the things just add up. But that, you know, it is, this board does take our responsibilities very seriously in thoroughly vetting the information that we have and applicants that are before us. And that is for every applicant that comes before us, whether an equity applicant or non-equity applicant. So, uh, I agree that the scoring was high in, in other areas and, and community support. And I think there will be areas of the city where we will see that'll be very hard to get a lot of community support. Or an over, I wouldn't say a lot, because I felt like they had, they had a good number of sort of of community support, but an overwhelming amount of community support. So, um, but overall, I thought it was a strong application.
Thank you. Chairwoman Joyce, do you have a motion?
Yes. I make a motion to grant this applicant a license for retail cannabis business at this location. With the conditions we described, are we putting those on the license about the, um, delivery only? In the hours?
So, delivery only? Is that for a certain time period?
I think they should come back to the board if they wanna change that.
Was it delivery or online? Online.
Online. Online. Online. Okay, I was going back through my paperwork. I'm like, wait a minute.
I'm, I was doing the same. So, online only.
Online, yeah.
From the hours of 7 to 8 p.m., Back Bay residents only. And no singles.
Right, no singles.
And the minimum, there was a minimum purchase order?
I think the other one on Boylston Street we granted, I think that's a $30 or $35 minimum sale?
35 minimum sale.
Okay.
And this is also conditioned on zoning relief for the buffer zone.
Right.
Yep.
So this is a motion to grant this conditionally pending relief for the buffer zone from the border, zoning board of appeals. The proposed conditions to be placed on the license are online ordering only from 7 to 8 p.m., Back Bay residents only, no singles and a minimum purchase price of $35. Are there any questions regarding the motion? Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
There are none opposed. The license is granted conditionally pending buffer zone relief from the zoning board of appeals. The following conditions will appear on any license that is issued. Online only, 7 to 8 p.m., Back Bay residents only, no singles and a minimum purchase price of $35.
Leslie, I do have a question because that license is gonna say online only for a certain period of time or is it going to be permanent?
They would have to, because it's a condition with no end date. They would have to come back to the board to request removal of that condition.
Gotcha. Thank you.
Of course. Union Twist Inc., the proposed license premise is 259 Cambridge Street, Alston. This is an application for retail recreational cannabis dispensary license with hours of operation proposed from 9 a.m. to 8 p.m. This is a non-equity applicant. The date of the initial application was December 5th, 2018. The date of filing with Inspeccional Services was December 4th, 2018. And the date of the community meeting was February 6th, 2019. Chairwoman Joyce?
Thank you. They had a very good diversity and inclusion plan. And I wanna talk about, again, the community feedback and the public support for a minute. And some of the concerns that were raised about traffic and access issues. The mayor's office and neighborhood services testified in support of the applicant at its hearing, noting that the support was based on a specific location and the continued community process by the applicant. And I really do appreciate the applicant working with us since the initial hearing in January and supplementing the materials. And it's very clear that they're continuing and they're willing to work with the neighborhood to get it right by both the neighborhood and the larger community. We heard some very persuasive testimony, an eloquent testimony from the young woman who is a neighbor. And I, and I take her comments very seriously and I, and it's because of those comments and other comments that I really urge the applicant to continue to have this open feedback loop and communication. The applicant has evidenced that it continues to make this good faith effort and work with the abutters around his concerns. They proposed bringing the parking and the deliveries into the building, which was a significant, which will significantly reduce the footprint of the dispensary, which I think is, is a very big change to their business model. We, we're not involved in the negotiations between the private parties. There's a neighborhood agreement that they're working on. But should they be granted a license, we would expect these concerns to be worked out between the parties. They continue to do additional outreach and they noticed their meetings in several languages, English, Chinese, Portuguese, and provide, provided some simultaneous translations at the hearings. And one thing that I really loved about this application, and I know there are people on this hearing that maybe be coming, coming before the board in the future and are trying to pick up on best practices, whatever, but this applicant wrote into their board memo and into their business plan that they, part of their, their plan to protect youth from accessing the product includes a commitment not to engage in any marketing, advertising or branding activities that may appeal or portray minors under 21. I think that is huge, huge to see a business making that commitment because that is a real issue. So, um, they addressed all the concerns between the first hearing between now that I personally had. And I thought overall, the application was very, very strong.
Thank you, Commissioner Holmes.
Ditto. They, um, they really scaled back their business operation to accommodate the concerns of the abutters and the neighbors. And I mean, I, for me, I think that's a huge step because who wants to limit what they can do financially in order to support a neighborhood? So I, to me, that, that really stood out. And the changes they've made to ensure that the, the alleyway does not take away from the, the, the community. And I just think they've made a, um, they've done a lot of good towards making sure that they're going to be a good neighbor. And I, along with the chairwoman, I just, I would hope and I would assume and not assume, but I am asking pretty positive that they will continue to, to work in, in that manner and to just make sure that they, um, they, they support the youth in the area. I think that young girl's testimony was extremely strong. And I think that she's a voice that they should continue to listen to and to gain some insight about how young people view this opportunity to have legalized marijuana. Everybody assumes that all young people are really into this, but we have to also think about what their concerns are and how they see this affecting their generation. So, other than that, I, I think the strong application and, and I, I really appreciate all the work they've done to help out the, the neighborhood and the abutters and to really listen to their concerns.
Thank you, Commissioner Lumbos.
Not much to add there, just, uh, the chairwoman Joyce and Commissioner Holmes, I think, nailed it. And just the, I am also impressed with how well they worked with the community to try to address those concerns. We do assume that that will continue. I, I really don't have anything to add, but great application. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Smith.
Thank you for the application. Thank you for all the follow-up that you've done with us in addressing all the concerns with the community and the abutters. I do echo the fact that the young person who spoke talked about, you know, the health impact in teens. I hope you always sort of keep that in mind going forward. But, um, also very good application. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner St. Jean.
I do thought it was a, a strong application and appreciated the, the follow-up with the community and in particular, multiple languages. I am very sensitive to issues of traffic and do think that its location right off the highway and street drive will make it, uh, very attractive to commuters once people start commuting again. But I also appreciate that there will also be more, more stores at that time. Thus, lessening that. But I would just encourage everyone who comes before us in these, you know, in, in these types of geographic locations to really think about traffic studies and, and impact. Because I think, uh, there's no way to underestimate how much that can be. But I think they did a great job of, of, uh, working with the neighbors and, and, and really making concessions on, on the parking and access for, for the local residents. So I really appreciate that and overall, I thought it was a great application.
Thank you. Chairwoman Joyce, do you have a motion?
Yes, I make a motion to grant this applicant a license at this location.
Are there any questions regarding the motion? Is there a second?
Second.
Commissioner Smith, all in favor?
Aye.
And seeing none opposed, the applicant has been granted a license at this location. Those are all the items before the board today. Thank you, chairwoman. Thank you all the commissioners for your continued hard work. And thank you everyone who attended today.